All right, we're ready?
Ready as we are.
All right, we're gonna bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It's about 1:50. We took a little extended lunch break, although the hearing room's been open since 1:30. We're now on item 22. And after we get through with item 22, we'll take up the ones we didn't complete this morning, which is 20E and one prior to that. So let's go to, take 22 Alpha. This is an application for an order to show cause. This is not an evidentiary hearing. This is a summary hearing to determine whether or not this board wants to issue an order directing individuals to come before us and show cause why they shouldn't be held, why they shouldn't be, not held in contempt, but why they should be required to, why the license should be revoked, that business license should be revoked. All right. Who's going first? Is that okay, Dan and Adriana? What I just said?
Sounded good to me, Dan.
All right. It's not a formal law evidence hearing. This is procedural only to determine whether or not there's enough information to go to issue an order to show cause. All right, go.
Okay. Good afternoon. Lee Plamow, Community Development Director, under which has Code Enforcement Division. So let me read into the record what this action is. The possible action today is to direct staff to serve a complaint and notice for an order to appear and show cause why business license should not be revoked, canceled, or suspended. It's specifically a license issued to Ann Sullivan, Capital City Liquidators, located at 3390 South Carson Street. The recommended action is to fix the time and place for the show cause hearing to be December 6, 2018. That's up to you in your motion to decide what date it should be given. So after talking to Iris a bit, I do have some slides with the information that's provided in your packet. I'm gonna skip a lot of it for now and just talk about what the code says about the process and what the recommended motion is today. So the show cause process, as you mentioned, this is just to set the date. And this is kind of a, this is a rough outline, kind of a summarized outline of what the process is for suspending, revoking, or canceling a license. And we're just at the first part here, which is to set, if you determine there's good cause today based on the packet that's presented to you, to direct staff to serve the complaint and set the hearing date for show cause hearing. This is not detailed, but to...
One second.
So if there's enough evidence, that good cause is the standard for revocation. So this is where we've talked a lot. This is gonna be a code section that gets cleaned up in the next code amendment to this, for sure. We know that. But anyway, so after your action today, we do serve the licensee with the complaint. Give them, per the code, it says 10 days to respond in writing, but we'll give them the date of the hearing, give them the time to respond in writing, tell them to show up at the hearing date, and then you conduct the show cause hearing. And it's only after that and after the verdict is delivered to them that the business would be shut down. Kind of general, high-level summary of the process. So let me skip ahead a little bit here. The reason, no, I think I want to go, and this is the, so the reason specifically that this is, there's an alleged violation of Carson City Municipal Code regarding outside storage on this, both in unscreened storage and the amount of permitted outside storage area without a special use permit. We have documented in there a history of violations that have been issued. This business has been in place since 2012. We started the first enforcement action in 2015. We've done a couple of, two or three citations, I think it's three citations now, since then. And at this point, we have not got compliance. And so this is a last resort for us to come forward and look at this method to get compliance to set a show cause hearing date. And so the recommended action would be provide to, as in your staff report, to set the hearing date for show cause.
Are you asking me, why aren't we doing contempt of court?
Because as I read the record here, procedural record, we have, as I read, there are, I think, three court decisions. And one, I think, is, one may be complied with in terms of money. There was a monetary amount. The other two, no. So, and they haven't done anything with respect to compliance with the code. My question to you is, why don't you go back to court with a contempt citation for failure to comply with the court order?
So we did do an order to show cause in court, which is the same thing as a contempt. They were fined $1,000. We could continue to do the same thing, but that would be something that we do in perpetuity. Technically, they can order jail time for contempt of court, but it's unlikely for a violation of this nature. So it would just be perpetual fines.
And considering it from the code enforcement side, too, I think it's good for the public to know that we don't have the authority to write a ticket and say, "Go pay your fine." We only have the authority to write a misdemeanor citation. That every time code enforcement officer does that, a court hearing date gets set, six to 10 weeks out, depending on the time, and we have to go before a judge. So for the amount of fines, we're spending a lot of staff time on this as well.
This is probably an obvious question, but why do they refuse to comply?
Well, I really shouldn't get into the merits of the issue at this point, just because you will be listening to this case if you choose to set it today. But we just, we do have a very strong history of noncompliance. So when they do appear, they can explain their side of the story, and then you can make a decision.
All right. Anybody out in the audience want to weigh in on this issue? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Lauren Houle, Concerned Member. First-time board appearance.
It's Lauren?
Yes, sir.
L.A.?
L-O-R-N-E.
And last name?
Houle. H-O-U-L-E.
Okay. Good. Go. Sorry.
So my main concern is that I know Ms. Sullivan, and she explained the situation to me. I just was appearing here to make sure that if, there was a little confusion because she wasn't sure if she needed to show up for this, but I wanted to make sure that this hearing was just to extend the date to December 6, instead of, and I had some questions about the extension to the December 6. If you guys decided to say no, is the board required to make a decision to suspend, cancel, or revoke the business license?
Well, before we get there, we have to have a hearing, a substantive hearing, which, what we're talking about is doing it December 6, if that works for everybody up here. But that hearing date, if it's December 6 or some other time, will be a substantive hearing where people, Ms. Sullivan and everybody else can weigh in on the merits of what, you know, why they have or haven't complied, or whatever you want to do there. But this isn't, this is just to say, you know, there's enough for us to go forward to have a hearing on whether or not this business license should be revoked. And then we'll have a substantive, what I call a substantive hearing on the merits. And that's where she's gonna want to be here, or you on her behalf, to explain, you know, what's going on. That's all. I mean, I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, I'm new to this process. It's a learning curve here for me. No, I appreciate the clarification. And as far as good cause, is that paperwork available for the public to view?
It's in the board packet.
Okay.
I don't know if there's one back, there should be one back there. You can, you're welcome to get one back there, or it's online, too, Lauren. It's online, too.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thanks.
Mayor, I just wanted to know, I failed to note in my presentation, I did, although the licensee is not required to appear at this hearing, we did give them notice. We hand-delivered last week a letter along with the staff report. And in that, in the letter, I specifically noted they're not ordered to attend this. However, they are welcome to come and provide comments at this hearing if they so chose.
All right. Anybody else? Board, we ready? I think a show cause is probably the only way to hear all the issues that are coming on this issue. So somebody want to make a motion, and we'll go from there, see how it flies.
I move to direct staff to serve a complaint and notice of an order to appear and show cause why business license number 6629 issued to Ann Sullivan, owner of Capital City Liquidators, located at 3390 South Carson Street, should not be suspended, canceled, or revoked pursuant to CCMC 4.04.210, subsection 1, for continued operation of the business in violation of the Carson City Municipal Code, and to fix the time and place for the show cause hearing to be December 6, 2018, at 8:30 a.m.
There's a motion and a second, and a motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. Carried. Okay. That's it. All right. All right. Let's now go back to...
20E, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Again, Lee Plamow. Community Development Director, under which we have the Building Department. And Cory, why don't you come on up here in case you have questions? So I have with me today Cory Coleman. He's our current building official with Charles Abbott Associates. This item is for presentation only to provide an annual update on building permit services provided by Charles Abbott Associates under current contract. This contract is good until September 2021 unless otherwise revoked by either party. So it renews each year, renews till then, but we do try to bring an annual report back to you to see how things are going. A lot of people don't know that our building services are contracted. I think that's a good thing. They're integrated into our building, they're integrated into our department. They look, wear the same clothes as everybody else in the department. But coming in, and they function and integrate with everybody in the city and the other departments. So it's been a good working relationship with them. And so this is just an opportunity, I don't have a long presentation for this, this is just an opportunity to ask questions, see where we are. I do have some updates. Up there on the screen, we've been collecting customer survey information over the last few years, and so that's just kind of a summary. Some of the more detailed comments are included in your packet, but we do get a lot of positive feedback. It's not always perfect, but in fact, we're always working with the Nevada Builders Alliance, I think that's the current name, they're called the Nevada Builders Alliance and the building community in general, to make improvements to the processes. We're currently, over the last year, we've gone a lot more to electronic plan review. Internally, we don't have the software systems fully set up in place, but we are with the new ERP system. By next year, we're gonna have that in place, but we have already, we're already getting plans electronically, which has improved the review process with other departments and being able to distribute them without coming in for the hard copy plans in the office. I had some questions about the cost and the budget a little bit, so I wanted to give you some updated numbers. If you could look on page 2 of the staff report, and it's the building fund revenues and expenditures. So I did want to note in there why in between fiscal year '17 and fiscal year '18, we ended up with, our revenues were higher than expenditures, but then in 2018, our expenditures were higher than revenues, so we operated at a negative. So the general, overall explanation of that, you also have the budget in there, and you can see that the salaries and benefits are a lot higher in 2018 than 2017. So by a little bit of background, going farther back to the recession, when we really had nothing going on, we really took all building permits, staff, and all those that have due reviews out of the budget because we weren't getting the revenues. It was subsidized, it's been subsidized by the general fund. So as revenues are coming back over time, we're trying to add back those reviewers, such as part of a planner's review time, a fire department review time, and those types of things. So we try to put those back into the budget to capture all the actual expenses of building permit review. It's a little bit of guesswork every year because obviously the more revenues we get, the more building permits we get, the more revenues we get. But we don't know how many building permits we're gonna get in every given year. So I think what happened between '17, I think unexpectedly, frankly, we had a little bit less in revenues in FY '18 than there were in FY '17. So probably by about that much, we had a little bit of a negative for the year, but overall, the fund's still doing good and in the positives. So we continue to do that every year, to look out, to make a projection of what's gonna happen in the following year. In terms of this year so far, and the contract fees paid, in your staff report, it's through August, I now have the information through September. So those numbers are, we've had building permit revenues of over $377,000 now, and which the fees to Charles Abbott is now over $201,000. But that's only a quarter way through the year. If that was projected out, that would be higher than any of the past years that we've ever had, but usually we're approaching the slower time year. So hopefully we stay on track, and it is a better year in terms of revenues, and we come out ahead on the revenues again this year. That's all I had for presentation. As I said, Cory's here. If you have any specific questions. Oh, and nope, my last thing, we reached out to the Nevada Builders Alliance for comments. They didn't provide written comments to him. I just got an email from Aaron saying to pass along to the board that they support the continuation of the contract with Charles Abbott Associates.
Just one quick question. I've gotten a couple of comments back from contractors, just saying that the review process has slowed down, and in their view, it's due to, they do their initial submittal, and they get their comments back, they correct the comments, submit it, and then they're getting new items on the second review, which is a problem that we had in the past, but that was really remediated since Charles Abbott came on for the last three years. They've done a very good job. So I'm just curious, in your opinion, if there's two possible explanations in my mind. First, that because engineers and architects are so busy, that they're submitting plans that are not complete. And secondly, that the workload that planning and Charles Abbott and plan review are doing right now is just to a point where maybe they don't have the time to review the plans at the level maybe that they wish they could. So just kind of interested to hear your take on that.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor. I want more specifics on those, if you see those, because every once in a while, somebody will try to submit a set of plans to get a placeholder. A placeholder doesn't do any good, because we review them, I have confidence in my staff that they're reviewing them 100% the first time. So if there are comments coming back, then it's a clarification. So for instance, we might be asking for, just as an example, some trust submittals, because they weren't in the original review, because trust companies are so far out in the manufacturing, that when we, when they submit the trust submittals, there might be follow-up questions to that. And that's one reason that we try to turn them around in five days from that point. So they've been the 10, 14 days right off the get-go, and then the five days. But if there's specific people or specific cases out there that you're aware of, that is an item that needs to be corrected, and I need to know very specific details, so we can sit down with the contractor or the architect and see if it's our issue, it's gonna be corrected, if it's their issue, then we're gonna have public relations and go one step further.
I'd like to add to that. I mean, just anecdotally, from talking to the other departments, I think it's a little bit of different things. Sometimes the submittal of incomplete plans, so that a department may have to say, "You have to submit this," and then really they're seeing that plan for the first time. It's always been a balance with the department of being too restrictive upfront. One way to eliminate that is to do a really intensive review upfront and not accept plans at all, unless they're absolutely complete. We get pushed back on that, going too far that way. And if you get too lax and try to help people through the process, we end up with incomplete plans sometimes. So over time, that has been a balance we're trying to hit.
Other questions, either Lee or Cory? Anybody? Any public comment on this issue? I don't see any. Very good. Looks like you're doing all right there, Cory.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anything else to come on this agenda item?
The non-action items.
Non-action item. Okay. I think that's it. Adriana, is that it? Now we're on Board of Supervisors, non-action.
Non-action and one last final comment.
One last what?
Public comment.
Oh, right. Okay. All right. Who's got first on non-action items? Go.
I just wanted to make an announcement. We just helped a company relocate here from Southern California, and the name, not Southern California, actually from the Bay Area, and the name of the company is North Bay Industries. And they manufacture U.S. flags. And they hire developmentally-disabled people and veterans. And so they have purchased a building here, and they're gonna spend about the next nine to 12 months refurbishing that building and fixtureizing it. And then we will be, Carson City will be the only site west of the Mississippi where U.S. flags are manufactured. That's gonna be about 40 to 50 jobs.
Nice.
So I thought that was a pretty interesting company to bring here.
Hopefully they'll make some Carson City flags, too, if we can ask them to do that. You know, and if you haven't seen up in the old assembly chambers, all the county flags are up there.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty cool. All right. Anything else?
Yes. This night was an airport authority meeting, and you all know we have a new manager. We're in the process of bringing on a new engineer, architect, consultants, and a new planning consultant, although that planning consultant, if that is worked out in negotiations, is also the one that's working with us on the airport master plan. Last night, our airport manager brought to us a three-page summary from the Center for Economic Development. Tom Harris up at UNR did it, and it will be fleshed out, and I've asked Ken, our manager, to bring it back when it's fleshed out for us sometime early next year. But in the executive summary, Mr. Harris made several points, talking about economic development and the multiplier effect. He told us that in reality, it's not complete in the sense that construction is not included. But I just want to read you a couple of paragraphs. One says, "The Carson City Airport is currently the fifth overall busiest airport and the third busiest general aviation airport in Nevada." And then in one of the findings, or estimated findings, "A summation of tenants and visitor direct output, employment, and labor income impacts were estimated at $25.8 million, actually $25.87 million, 188 employees, and $6.294 million, respectively. Total output, employment, and labor income impacts for tenants and visitors is estimated to be $35.7 million, 269.6 jobs, and $9.775 million, respectively. Results of this study compare favorably to a previous study completed in 2005." I bring this up, he estimates that the construction, you know, like for taxiways and runways, et cetera, from the federal aviation authority grants that we get, will increase this significantly. And we're in the process of doing a strategic plan, or starting to do a strategic plan, and working on the master plan, and I just wanted you all to be aware. I've always thought the airport here was sort of underutilized, but has a lot of potential, and I'm hoping that going forward, we can realize that potential. Another thing that's in the works is, our new manager is angling to try and get the FAA to allow night flights to come in here. It's actually used at night by people like Endon, who are partners with us on it, but the truth of the matter is, no commercial comes in. And if we can get that, and the way they're doing it, the idea was that we could never do it because of our hills and et cetera, but that if they realign approaches, they might be able to find a way to get it done. It may be a heavy lift, but it would really, really make a big difference. So just to report from where we are.
So are we gonna get the Blue Angels to lend here one time? All right. All right. Anybody else? All right. Just a couple of things. One, earlier this week, I went on an early morning tour of various homeless camps around Carson City with Craig Legere, the chaplain, the sheriff chaplain, just to kind of get a feel, a gut feel for what's going on out there. And I'm gonna be doing the same with Don Quilisi, who's our enforcement officer. When he gets back from hunting, that'll be next, probably the first week in November. But it's a fascinating what's going on out there. I mean, because it just seems like it's odd when you've got full employment in this country, we still have the homeless population going up, and so you try and find out, I'm trying to find out anyway, what's the real information. Everybody has anecdotal ideas about, you know, these people are slackers, they're not, they're mentally ill, they're not, they're drug addicted, they're not. And I don't know if I got anything definitive from it, but I got a good feel for what our people go through, and I'll get a better feel when Quilisi shows me around, because Craig Legere hands out to the homeless, he knows every homeless person in this town by name. And he'll hand out socks, his sleeping bag, you know, if he's got a blanket, hand out a blanket. Sometimes he has a backpack. Anyway, it was an interesting, it was an interesting morning. And then everybody remembers next Saturday is Nevada Day, right?
Yep. Friday, our ribbon cutting.
Again?
More importantly, it's my birthday.
Oh, man.
Gotta get what's important.
And tomorrow, tomorrow, we're having a ribbon cutting at the Ham property?
Yes.
Okay. And we meet up at the water tower, is that right?
That's what it said.
Nobody knows?
Yeah.
We'll tell you exactly where it's at. If we get to the water tank, we can figure it out. Yeah, it's two miles up by the for sale sign. That's what they said.
Oh.
Water.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so that's where you meet. Is that one? One.
I think it's 12:30, isn't it?
No, it's one.
Oh.
Well, you better get there at 12:30.
I have one.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else? Go ahead. How you doing?
I just wanted to remind everyone, early voting starts Saturday. I don't encourage anybody to come Saturday unless they want to stand in line, because I have a feeling the turnout's gonna be huge. Our voter registration's up over 4,000 voters since the last general election. And we have been slammed with absentee ballot requests. And so I just want to encourage those who received their absentee ballot to vote it and get it in by November 6. But early voting starts Saturday, we're open 10 to 2 on Saturdays. We're open Nevada Day, and we're open that holiday, and, you know, Monday through Friday, 8 until 6. So plenty of opportunity to get out and vote, so all you new 4,000 voters, plus the other 27,000, make sure you come out. And so I just want to encourage those who receive their absentee ballot to vote it and get it in by November 6. But early voting starts Saturday. We're open 10 to 2 on Saturdays. We're open Nevada Day, and we're open that holiday, and, you know, Monday through Friday, 8 until 6. So plenty of opportunity to get out and vote. So all you new 4,000 voters, plus the other 27,000, make sure you come out and visit us. So we're excited about our new voting equipment, of course, and...
Yeah, well, the only ones are doing all right. Woo-hoo.
Yeah.
The right decision.
Yeah. Good job. Thanks.
All right. Let me give a compliment to Weinberg Machining, too, while we're here.
Yes.
Weinberg, another topic.
Oh, I was going to say, and this is my last election, I have conducted 44 elections in my career.
You're not that old.
That's a lot. Yeah.
You're not that old.
Yeah. It's crazy, huh?
Are you really 60?
No.
I'm kidding you.
No, I'm only 27.
I did it, my goodness.
Yeah.
All right. Anyway, just kind of a fun thing. I was going to ride one of the police motorcycles to go with the cops on Nevada Day, and the bike is, I had to fess up, the bike is too big for me. So I donated a spot in the parade to a charity, and then I'll ride, Weinberg Machining has let me borrow their Polaris slingshot, so I'll be riding the Polaris slingshot with the cops.
Oh, neat.
And so we'll see. See if I can drive that. Maybe, you know, it's three-wheel, I don't have to worry about falling over.
[laughing]
Or maybe run into anything. Anyway.
That's a maybe.
I'm just, you know, it's a function of getting older. I used to be a Harley guy, I ride Harleys, anyway. Now you get on these things, you know, you have a newfound respect for what these cops go through on those motorcycles when they do those, the motorcycle, what do you call them, run the traps, I call it? That's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Anyway. Anything else? All right. Let's go buy flags when they get here.
Yeah.
Final public comment. Anybody? Nobody? All right. Turn.